Louise, if you could call them please.
Councilwoman Interior. Councilwoman Joanna.
Here.
Councilwoman Dunnigan. Councilwoman Benesia.
Here.
Councilwoman Dunigan.
Here.
Councilman Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Gordon.
Here. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. And I have a couple of things, we have a couple of things tonight that we all want to go through. But I just want to, I want to say this before I start this meeting tonight. And as everyone knows and as experienced, we had, you know, old Aunt Irene had come through as a hurricane this week, last weekend. And I just want to commend all the people that were involved. Freddie Menzel, Tommy Polet from the OEM, the police department, the fire department, and DPW. Everybody in this building, everybody worked extremely hard in a tough situation. And to the men in the back and the fire department and everybody else, I just want to commend you and thank you for all of that work on behalf of the council of Bloomfield. Okay? We have a proclamation, Turn the Town Teal. Whereas there is no early detection test for ovarian cancer. And whereas ovarian cancer is called a silent disease because its symptoms are often vague or subtle. And whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of cancer deaths among women and leading cause of gynecological cancer deaths in the United States each year. More than 22,000 women are diagnosed with this disease and approximately 16,000 die from it. And whereas, if detected in its early stages, survival from ovarian cancer is 90 to 95 percent. Yet the five-year survival rate for the disease is only 28 percent because it is so difficult to detect early. And whereas, the Turn the Town Teal campaign was launched by Gail McNeil of Chatham, New Jersey during her ten-year battle with ovarian cancer. And whereas, Turn the Town Teal, Inc., and the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition are partnering to promote awareness of ovarian cancer through the Turn the Towns Teal campaign. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the township of Bloomfield, New Jersey, declare September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month and support the Turn the Town Teal awareness campaign. Is everyone here for a minute of this evening? If not, Louise, if you can send it out. Thank you very much. Okay, approval of minutes of previous meetings?
Yes, mayor and council, three fourths, approval of the minutes from July 25, 2011 conference meeting, August 8, 2011, a regular meeting, February 28, 2011 conference meeting, September 8, 2008 conference meeting. I so move forward on approval of these minutes.
Second, councilwoman Benesia. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opening of reading of picks? We have none. Administration presented by the township administrator. We have none. Reports of special counsel committees. Appointment by the mayor and council?
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to bring forth Jill Montgill as the member of the recycling committee.
Second, councilwoman Dunigan. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Come up, we're going to swing in.
I solemnly swear. That I will support the constitutional.
And I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The constitutional state of New Jersey.
And the constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
The United States.
The United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
Aye. Jill Montgill.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Partially.
And partially.
Justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of recycling committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you, Jill. Next, appointment by the mayor and council, rent advisory committee. Councilman Rowan?
Oh yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a place of nomination to councilor three, Mr. Kevin Lindell. I move his nomination forward.
Second, councilwoman Joanna. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move, thank you. Kevin, come on up.
I need to cheers. All right, Kevin, your name now. Aye.
Aye, Kevin Lindell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established of the United States.
And to the government established of the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Kevin Lindell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and partially and justly.
And I will faithfully and partially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of.
Perform all the duties of the office of rent advisory committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Right.
And again, thanks to Jill and to Kevin. A lot of the things that get accomplished in this community are done by volunteers and people like you. So we really respect the fact that you're coming up front and doing it. So, thank you. Okay, what we'd like to do, before we go to communications, I'm going to go to resolution one, commendations for Bloomfield Police Department.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a resolution here. 2011 resolution, police department commendation. Whereas during the summer months of the calendar year 2011, several free male victims were sexually assaulted in or around the township of Bloomfield. And whereas, from the first incident, the police department administration identified the need to proactively address the crime. Whereas, the Bloomfield Police Department immediately notified the Essex County Prosecutor's Office and surrounding police departments of the nature of the crime. And the police department spearheaded a task force and formulated an aggressive method of investigating procedures, both covert and selective overt in nature to find, identify, and arrest the perpetrator. And whereas, the officers of the entire Bloomfield Police Department were given specific duties and assignments to aggressively utilize police procedures in their attempt to identify the suspect. And whereas, numerous patrol officers stopped and identified various individuals that matched the description of the suspect and forwarded the information to the Criminal Investigation Division Detective Bureau for follow-up. And whereas, patrol officers acted professionally in doing so, preserved the civil rights and dignity of the citizens that were interacted with. And whereas, the Bloomfield Police Department Detective Bureau examined and investigated many leads, suspects, and evidence. As a result of their investigation, they identified certain patterns and modus operandi of the suspect. And whereas, teams of detectives conducted covert surveillance in targeted geographic areas and in specific timeframes as identified through their investigation. And whereas, on August 6, 2011, at approximately 2:30 a.m., members of the Bloomfield Police Department Detective Bureau, with the assistance of the Belleville Detective and the Essex County Prosecutor Detectives, were conducting surveillance in a targeted area. And whereas, the Bloomfield detectives observed and targeted a suspect from their concealed location and tracked his movements. And whereas, Bloomfield detectives then directed that the suspect be stopped and investigated using probable cause due to his actions. And whereas, a subsequent investigation produced actually physical evidence at the scene that matched certain physical elements of the previous crimes. The suspect was then investigated further. And whereas, through proper interview and interrogation techniques, the suspect confessed to the previous sexual assaults of the female victim and was subsequently charged criminally according to New Jersey's state criminal code. And whereas, due to the police department's immediate proactive and professional response to the emergent sexual crime pattern, a suspect was identified and arrested. And this dangerous, serious felon was removed from the streets of the township of Bloomfield and the state of New Jersey so that no other female victim shall fall prey to his crimes of sexual assault and he shall be held accountable for his actions in a court of law. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the township of Bloomfield, county of Essex, state of New Jersey, on behalf of the mayor and the council, we do hereby commend and congratulate all the members of the Bloomfield Police Department who worked so professionally and diligently in their determination and dedication to their duties. And this body of government also recognizes their commitment to the citizens of Bloomfield and demonstrated by their actions during the summer of 2011. And be it further resolved that the resolution shall be spread in full upon the minutes of this meeting and that a certified copy here is signed by the mayor to be presented to the representative members of the Bloomfield Police Department. And I hereby certify the above resolution was duly adopted by the mayor and the council of the town of Bloomfield at a meeting of said town council held September 6, 2011. And that would be after we pass it, Ray McCarthy, mayor. So I so move this resolution, sir.
Second, councilwoman Benesia. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. Gentlemen, at this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, honor Bloomfield's fans.
Again, we can't say enough about our police officers in this community. They're out there, they're doing the things that they need to do. They help, they protect, they serve. And any good force is reflective of great leadership. And under Chief Criscull, there is great leadership there. So, chief, great job by your men. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to communications. Written? None written, we'll go to the oral portion. And the first person is Gabe Fish. Name and address, please. Name and address, can you give us for the record?
The thrust of my being here essentially is the rent advisory committee, which seems to be non-existent, even though in name it exists. I will ask councilwoman Dunigan, who seems to be the prime person on the council involved in this, where we are at at this point.
Go ahead, you have your time to speak.
Okay. Obviously, something has to be done. We have to have a fact-finding committee. I am a member of the Association of Troy Towers. And people accost me every day. Well, what's going on? We have one person, for example, who has a 47 percent increase over two years, which is unconscionable, especially in these times where most people are hurting. There are a lot of people on social security there. There hasn't been no raise for two years. Those who are working have not had any kind of increase in salary. Real wages, as a matter of fact, have been going down since 1973. I don't know if you people are aware of that. Because perhaps you're not in a position to experience that. But it's there. And, I don't know, I was brought up to believe that Democrats had mucho simpatico for people who are finding it tough. It doesn't seem to be that way. Things are getting tougher. The real unemployment numbers, if you factor in people who are no longer looking for work or part-time workers who, when they are allowed jobs, will be looking to work full-time, you're talking about 18 percent or so. So things are not ripe in Kansas City. So, assuming that this, I know the renters, if you will, Kevin has been sworn in, we have another person which makes up our contingency of two. We should have two management people and two, three from the general public or non-aligned people, if you will. Such as it is. But, to give you an example of what's going on, we had almost 70 cars flooded out over the last week. Now Hurricane Floyd flooded out 100 or so cars in Troy Towers. Not one notice was put up by the elevators that please do not park in the garage, which tends to flood, and in the back parking lot. Well, there was nothing done there. Because you know what? They don't care. They have no inclination about people. It just doesn't exist. They're totally inured to their problems. So, let's assume that the committee is formed. And there's discussion, there's research done on the problems, et cetera. So let's say hypothetically, this is accomplished three months from now, whatever it may be. The people now who are within that time period, who are faced with signing leases of unconscionable rates, where do they stand? What kind of protection do they have? It seems to me that something has to be done to at least protect those people that are facing these harsh realities in this given time period, which I just related to you. So I would like to really see something done. Can I ask you a question?
No.
I can't ask a question?
You could ask through me, you could ask.
Yeah, okay, fine. I want to know where this, where the committee stands, right? Is it formulated? Do we have?
It's being formulated, we just got another, there was another resume, a request for a.
From what team?
For the, for the tenant side of it. As I said, I contacted, I sent out a letter contacting some of the management people and I've got a quasi-response for them. So I think that we'll be moving forward rather quickly.
Okay. These are very serious problems that we are facing. And I'm sure it's not only Troy Towers. But these are very, very harsh increases. This one woman, to be faced with a 47 percent increase over two years and there being understanding about it, where only $238, which she just signed her lease, an increase, and then the residual kicks in in 2012. So, this is unconscionable. It's very punitive, to say the least. So I appreciate, you guys get this committee going and let's get on the ball. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Has no one else to sign up? Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, motion to close? So move. Moved by councilman Rowan. Second by councilman Hamilton. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move, okay, thank you. Moving on, introduction of proposed ordinances on first reading.
Mayor and council have an ordinance to amend and supplement chapter 387 of the Bloomfield Township Code providing parking for physically limited persons. Question, is it 21 Donald or 121 Donald Street? Because it's written differently on the agenda versus our computer sheet. Should be accurate.
On the ordinance, it says 21 Donald Street.
Okay, fine. 21 Donald Street and 48 Hill Street. I so move this ordinance on first reading forward.
21 Donald Street, that's right. Thank you, okay. Second by councilman Rowan. Was it? Thank you very much. Anyone from the council which should be heard? Hearing none, poll the council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunigan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Gordon?
Yes.
Number two?
Mayor and council, before me, I have an ordinance to amend the township of Bloomfield's ordinance adopting titles for employees and fixing salary ranges for the deputy municipal clerk. I so move this.
Second, councilwoman Dunigan? Anyone from the council which should be heard? Hearing none, poll the council, please? Oh, I'm sorry, councilman Rowan?
Yeah, students, I just want to know why it was October 1st, the date, on that review?
That's the, my understanding is that's the date, the closest date it can become is, first of all, finance wants it to begin at the beginning of a month for calculation purposes, but more importantly, like any ordinance, it has to be read twice. And then there's a waiting period before the ordinance becomes effective. So that's just about the time when the ordinance becomes effective.
All right, but then if I could just fast-forward into the next one. The other individual that we're considering tonight setting the salary range for, it goes into effect.
All right, well, let's get, when we come to that.
Well, if you vote for one now, Mr. Mayor, but the point is, how come the two dates were in conjunction? One is for September 9th.
The other person, my understanding, will actually receive, for lack of a better word, back, although that's a current employee, that position will receive the back pay. They're going to start their new position on the date that's listed in your ordinance, is my understanding.
Yeah, right, but I mean, we discussed this, this individual, going back to the first individual that we're referring to right now. That individual is actually owed two and a half years. Because of a, because of a snafu mistake that should be corrected.
To answer your question, there's no legal reason to start, the ordinance when it starts, it was written that way because that's when the ordinance would become effective and there would be no back pay. If you or any other council member wants to make that ordinance effective on a different date, you're free to do so and then there'll be a back pay issue, that's financed with tact.
So you understand, too, that the person affected was not asking for anything backwards?
I didn't really know whether that person asked for it, I was, it just seemed to be inconsistent that one person is penalized while the other person isn't, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, that person didn't feel penalized, councilman, that's the reason. And said, look, as long as you correct the wrong, correct it, they were very happy with that.
So that's the person, then, just the two and a half years of mistake is negated? Or ignored, or?
Considering it wasn't predominant, it wasn't a, how do you say? Yeah, it wasn't a real mistake, it was just something that we've done to correct the situation. And that person who was affected by this is extremely happy about the fact that it has been.
Well, I just want to add the fact that we're all human and we all make mistakes. But it seems to me that if somebody made a mistake, if we made a mistake and it's two and a half years in the making, that there should be some retroactive aspect to that. It doesn't seem to me to be fair. Whenever it was.
Counsel neither disgust nor rest, so that's, again, the other. Okay. Oh, thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, poll the council, please?
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunigan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Yes.
Yes. So move, thank you. Number three?
Mayor and council, I have an ordinance to amend the township of Bloomfield's ordinance adopting titles for employees and fixing salary ranges for the director of the Department of Public Works and Parks.
Second. Second, councilman Hamilton. Anyone from the council which should be heard? Hearing none, poll the council, please?
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunigan? Councilman Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Gordon?
Yes. Number four?
Mayor and members of council, the ordinance to amend chapter 401, solid waste, 11-46, article one, recycling. The definition within the township code of the township of Bloomfield. I so move the ordinance.
Second.
Second, councilman Joanna. Discussion? Anyone from the council which should be heard? Hearing none, poll the council, please?
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan? Councilman? Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Council? Excuse me. Councilwoman Dunigan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Gordon?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So move, thank you. I'm watching to see all the new microphones we have, if everybody gets heard, so. Councilman Rowan, can you just pull your microphone a little bit to you? Just a little bit closer.
What are you doing today?
I can see, I can see that when people talk, if it's being done, right? Right, Louise? New. Beautiful. It's a beautiful thing here. Hearing the part adoption proposal on second reading, we have none. Consent resolutions. We have a bunch.
Mayor and council, I have a tax appeal settlement for 2010, 11, and 12 for block 272, lot 11, also known as 47 Oakland Avenue, 32 Fremont Avenue, 33-39 Oakland Avenue. Do you want all of them there?
You could just read the title, councilman, that's probably the easiest thing.
Resolution authorizing settlement of 210, 11, and 12 for block 691, lot 25.
That's good.
526 Broad Street. Settlement of 2010, 11, and 12, tax appeal. Block 20, lot 18, known as 54 Bloomfield Avenue. 210, 211, and 212, tax appeal settlement. Block 461, 21, known as 200 Belleville Avenue. I have a resolution providing for the insertion of special items of revenue appropriations in the budget. Over and under $4,400.
Councilman, you missed resolution four.
Did I? Resolution four, authorizing 210, 211, and 212. The block 241, lot 47, known as 1-9 Broad Street. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Resolution provided, oh, we got that. Refund property, overpayments of $5,390 for 210 and 211. Sale of excess township-owned properties. Revision of appointment date, mayor and council secretary. Agreement of Foley Field Lease. A change order of $8,950 reduction on the asbestos remediation. A change order of Memorial Field. Sewer repair work, 1627 Broad Street. Agreement of FMBA Local 19. Appointment of, okay, that stops.
And if you could read number seven. And you got a lot here. Number seven, you missed too, the over the limit and under arrest.
Oh, I thought I did that, Mayor, but, okay, over, so move that resolution forward.
Moved by councilman Joanna, second by councilman Benesia.
Mayor, may I just read formally the Foley Field Lease Arrangement? That's, I think, of interest to you.
I think, of interest to many in the community? Foley's arrangement is very short.
Okay, go ahead.
If I may, hang on. Whereas the Board of Education passed a resolution approving to enter into a lease agreement with the township of Bloomfield, whereas the township desires to enter into the lease agreement with the Board of Education, now therefore be it resolved to the mayor and council, township of Bloomfield, county of S60, to hereby authorize the mayor to execute the attached lease agreement between the township of Bloomfield and the Board of Education.
Thank you. Thank you. It was moved by Councilman Joanna, seconded by Councilman Benesia. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved, thank you very much. Resolution two?
Mayor and council, before me, I have a resolution for an agreement between FMBA Local 19 and the township of Bloomfield. I so move this.
Second, Councilwoman Donegan. Discussion? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Yes.
Yes. So moved, thank you very much. Number three?
Mayor and council, I have before me a resolution for the appointment of the Fire Department of Anthony Diaz.
Second. Seconded by Councilman Hamilton. Mr. Rowan has a little blurb that he's going to read into it, and we'll put that in for each of the appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. First change we'd like to make is recognize that it's the Civil Service Commission, not the Department of Personnel or the Department of Civil Service, that's a typo on your resolutions. Then the last sentence in the now and therefore be resolved, the last sentence should state, subject to certification by the Civil Service Commission, and residency verification, comma, successful medical review and criminal background check. I then recommend we add another be further resolved, to read as follows, be further resolved that if the fire chief, in consultation with the township administrator and township attorney, find that the above candidate does not meet the township's residency requirement, or the candidate does not receive medical clearance, or has any criminal history, this conditional offer of employment will automatically be withdrawn without further action of the council.
Okay. And that will include, we do the resolutions, so that all of those, that's included for all the six, what brings. Moved by Councilwoman Donegan, seconded by Councilman Hamilton, any other discussion? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Yes. Number four?
Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to move for the appointment of Damian Frank Quah to the Bloomfield Fire Department.
I'll second that. Second, Councilman Joanna. Anyone from the council who should be heard? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Number five?
Number five, Mayor, appointment of Robert Coby Lee Jr. to the Bloomfield Fire Department, I so move the resolution.
Second. Second, Councilman Benesia. Discussion? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Yes. Number six?
Mayor, I have the appointment for the Fire Department for Javita Francisco, I so move this forward.
Second. Second, Councilman Rowan. Discussion? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Yes. Number seven?
Number seven, Mr. Mayor, I have an appointment to the Bloomfield Fire Department, Mr. Gosa Van Calrose, I so move the resolution.
Second. Second, Councilman Benesia. Discussion? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Number eight?
Mayor and council, I have the appointment of Patrick Fazini to the Bloomfield Fire Department, I so move this.
Second, Councilwoman Donegan. Discussion? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Number nine, person-to-person transfer?
Mayor and council, I have a resolution for a person-to-person transfer, ABC, memory ABG of distribution license, Milkvale Wines Incorporated, license number 07024406009 to 8888, Route 22 Incorporated, at 839 Broad Street in Bloomfield. I so move this resolution.
Second. Second, Councilman Benesia. Hearing none, all in favor? I'm sorry, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Stay.
Mayor, pardon.
Yes. Number 10?
Mayor and council, I have before me to rescind renewal for 2011, 2012, the license here at the Cereal Inc., otherwise known as Parkside Pizzeria, Casa Torino Restaurant at 455 Broad Street. I so move this forward.
Second. Second, Councilman Benesia. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, why, why are we rescinding this?
We discussed this, this was two weeks ago, they did not want us to, he needs a special ruling for that particular year, so it should not be on the resolution.
Right, but we send it for what, for how long?
Until he applies for the special rule.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Stay.
Mayor, pardon.
Yes. Next, 11.
Mayor and members of the council, I have a resolution affirming the township council's support of the Bias Intimidation Statute in New Jersey, and resolving to take a further steps to guarantee its implementation in the township of Bloomfield. I so move the resolution.
I'll second that. Councilman Joanna. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next.
Mayor and council, before me, I have a resolution for the township of Bloomfield to join in the national moment of remembrance for the 10th anniversary of September 11th. I so move this.
Second, Councilwoman Donegan. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved, thank you. Number 13?
Mayor and council, I have before me an appointment for Chief Justice John Pepparazzo. I so move this forward.
Second. Second, Councilman Benesia. Hearing none, I'm sorry, Councilman Rowan?
Mr. Mayor, I believe some weeks ago, I asked for a, an explanation, I asked a question in conference regarding this issue, and I haven't received, and I wanted a written explanation, I haven't received it.
I was under the impression that Yoshi got something from the judge?
I do know that the-
I got an email the next day, or whatever, and it was completely twisted. I asked if there was a complaint filed, not a lawsuit, and I haven't received it.
And-
Not that I have any objection to reappointing the judge, but I did ask for an explanation.
I can say that the-
I haven't received it.
Okay, we're gonna let the attorney-
I can say that the judge has represented his filed no complaint.
Oh, well, I could have known that two weeks ago.
The administrator was in charge of contacting you and doing that.
He responded to me.
Oh, he thought he did?
I answered the email, and I got no response, and I put it forth, everyone got the copy of it.
Just was under the impression that he did?
It's not very efficient, he's coming back to me all the time for something.
It's, the, McCarthy at Sprint is dead, and that's my other phone.
Maybe the department wanted to change that.
Okay.
Comes back, you know, a mail-
Yeah, if you could take it off, that was a township phone that I gave back.
All right, thank you.
All right?
There was a certain email identifying, saying that it stated as there was no complaint filed, as well as no lawsuit, so.
Okay.
As the township stated, there was no action taken.
No action taken, okay, thank you. You're welcome. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, poll of council, please.
Councilman Joanna?
Yes.
Councilman Rowan?
Yes.
Councilman Benesia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donegan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor, pardon.
Yes. Unfinished business, we have none, new business, licenses?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, license, we have two, massage body work therapist license for Flix Bow 49 Central Avenue, West Caldwell, and a landscaper license at Dean Springs, 664 Valley Road, Gillette, in Jersey, I so move them.
Second. Second, Councilman Hamilton. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved, thank you.